Welcome to our Mound City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, July 8th, 6:02. Can we do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, got our agenda. Do we have any amendments?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
All right, got a motion. Can I get a second? Second? All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. I got the consent agenda. And there's a disclosure here, but items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine in nature, then evaluated by staff, recommended by staff for approval by the council, and will be enacted by a roll call vote. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests so. At this time, anyone present who wish to offer dissenting comment to any items on the consent agenda is invited to identify themselves and the item of concern. So I have our consent agenda. Can someone go through A through E?
I can do that. Consent agenda items A through E. A, approve payment of claims. B, approve minutes from June 24th, City Council workshop, and June 24th, June 24th, regular meeting. C, approve Resolution 25-61, approving requests from Molly Williams for substantially similar use determination at 2378 Wilshire Boulevard, planning case 2506. D, pay request number two, in the amount of $319,853.60 to concrete idea for Public Works project 25-08 and 25-09. And E, miscellaneous pay request in the amount of $29,330 to Klein Underground for 2024 manhole rehab project, project 24-05.
All right, we got A through E on the consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull any of those? No? Talk about, okay. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda A through E.
I got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Herrick?
Aye.
Councilmember McEnany?
Aye.
Councilmember Pugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Costalano?
Aye.
Mayor Holt?
Aye.
All right, that's all approved. Number five, we got comments and suggestions from anybody that's, their item is not on the agenda. If you want to come up, you get three minutes.
Can you explain?
Come on up. Give us your name and address.
Of course. Tyler Piper, 5504 Church Road. Nice to see you all again. Sorry, Cat Herrick just flew off me. Coming up as a private citizen, because when I made the proposal for Edgewater, I was not yet on the Parks and Open Space Commission, so that was part of how that whole grant was laid out in terms, in terms of how I was going to kind of organize and kind of direct the duties. Well, I was happy that today I finally received confirmation from Hennepin County that that grant has been accepted.
Nice.
So very happy. It was, I think, 34 applicants and 13 were accepted, so Edgewater Park is one of them. As, I believe it was in January, I can't remember the exact meeting, 22nd or 11th, there was a request for $1,750, which was the city's contribution, and then we'll be receiving $5,000 as a part of that. I spoke recently with a neighbor, which was a really nice experience, Chuck. He says him and his significant other sometimes visit and pick the strawberries or, you know, enjoy the flowers and stuff nearby. So kind of let him know I was in the early stages of hearing about it, that it was on the horizon, and he didn't have any complaints and seemed to welcome it, and I plan on doing rounds with the rest of the neighbors. So more to come. I'll be kind of funneling stuff hopefully through the Parks and Open Spaces Commission as just to save your guys' time, but if there's any decisions or kind of deferring to, you know, how does the city of Mound want to use that $1,750, whether it's for signs or whether you feel you'd rather put it on, you know, for this side of the proposal. It's kind of has to be stuff that was already allotted and agreed to by, by all of us really here, but that would be the decision that, you know, should it be a concern, I can always remove myself as a vote from, you know, that Parks and Open Spaces Commission decision if necessary, but really, I'm just excited to get plants in the ground. Because of the timing, it's probably going to be a fall planting. I know I'm running up on three minutes, so I'm keeping it short, but I just got the, I just got the email today, so I just wanted to share the good news and thank you all for, you know, going with me through the process. It was like December to January to multiple meetings, I believe, in February and March and April, and so thank you all very much.
Yeah, good job.
Just looking forward to communicating more on that.
Thank you.
All right. Number six, we got Orno.
Were you on the consent agenda?
Can we go now?
Yeah, you can go. Go enjoy the beautiful weather.
All right, number six, we got Orno Police Department with the June 2025 activity report.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So the last few weeks, we've been pretty busy. We've had a lot of activity. A lot of people come in our area, so our calls for service are up. Nothing that's alarming, it's just more people in our area, more people taking part in activities around us. So it's one of those things, summer's kicked off and we've seen it. This weekend was busy. The officers were called to call, the way it sounds. Two weeks ago, we got, very, very fortunately, we got hit, we got the best that we could have got from a storm. There was two tornadoes on the ground. We were working, they were very close to our area, but we ended up with just a few trees down, just a few wires down. We got it all handled, so I think that we were very fortunate. We were happy that it happened the way it happened, so we got that handled. Just some things from our office. Spirit Lake is pretty well set, I'm told, and they're just putting a few final things in place as of right now. New officer, Colton Beck, started yesterday. I just got done on the range with him, spent all day out there. He's doing really well. He's got a lot of good knowledge of the job, so he's going to be doing fine, I think. Kenan Onyx is going to be sworn in next Monday, 14th, at, in Orno for our police department, so he'll be there receiving his badge. And then we have a new intern that started with us. She's interested in the profession, so she'll be doing some stuff around the PD, just trying to experience our, our career. And then we also have a new reserve that started, and we're looking at him to maybe move into replacing Colton Beck, who was our cadet. So other than that, that's all we have at this time. If there's any questions, can I try to answer them?
Council have any questions?
I think so. So you guys, you aren't, there's no open positions right now, or just the cadet?
I want to say there is, we do have room for one, but it's one of those plus-one officer deals where it's, somebody's got to come from the community, no background in law enforcement, and then we send them to school to learn, so. But that's what we're kind of waiting on, to try to use that.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, number seven, we got received final plans and order advertisement for bids. Leslie comments, phase two. Just a caveat to this, the next one, we'll talk about number eight, will be phase two and a half, where we'll focus on the art walk part of this. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Matt Baumann, City Engineer. So I was here two weeks ago, meeting with you guys and kind of discussing the plans at the 95% stage, and we talked through some elements in there to keep and to drop, and some tweaks to that. I also want to point out the fact that unfortunately, we did have an error in our calculations last time, the estimate was, was off on that. We have for you today, that incorporates everything that you brought up, and then we did, we had another meeting yesterday, so you have another estimate in front of you, where we tweaked the numbers a little bit more, tightened them up on the electrical side, and so they're slightly lower than what's in the packet for you there. So in the, I'll just go over some of the items in a little bit more detail. Items included in this portion of the project are the concrete paving of the plaza, north end and seating area on the south side, installation of lighting area, installation of lighting elements and electrical around the park, finalizing the landscaping generally around the perimeter, excluding the, that southeast portion of it, and then interpretive signs and wayfinding sign updates, and then some items that are included as alternates are the decking replacement at the performance area, chairs at the plaza, trail upgrade to concrete on the southeast side of the park, and then one other, there's a wayfinding sign that was damaged and completely removed, and we also moved that down in an alternate just so that we have some option to keep, keep this all within the budget. And the next piece there goes over what we pulled, so potentially for the project two and a half, the art installations, hammock posts, landscaping, the art walk. I think that generally covers it. So within the city's long-term financial plan, the budget for this year was $884,000. That's with inflation, so the number that I presented to you last time in that table was our initial draft from two years, early in 2024, I believe. So the budget's $884,000. Our total estimated project cost without the alternates is $790,000 as of now, and then, and then with the alternates is $861,000. On the last page of the, of the estimate that I handed out to you, kind of breaks down some of the pieces in a little bit more detail as far, so there's removals, earthwork, and hardscaping, a landscaping section, wayfinding, interpretive, and then electrical. And so if we aren't comfortable quite with the budget, that we can cut through some more potential pieces to drop out and save for future phases. And then, so I got a blank spot there for art and additional landscaping is two and a half, and then I pulled together kind of a rougher estimate for the future phase, so that would be the, getting the open air shelter installed, and then the rest of the concrete up in the plaza area, and a little, maybe a little bit of additional there, so. And then, so at the bottom, you see that, that total estimated is 500. The long-term financial plan, if we were to build it this year, that dollar amount would be 651,000, so there is theoretically some room there to work with that word, because we swapped some pieces between the phases two and three.
Can you pull up the map? It's on page 95 of the agenda. Okay, so just, I know we're going to talk about the art in a second, but the trees on the right side, that's in the current bid?
Yeah, those are all in the current bid. Those ones there.
Because that might change. Depending on what we've talked about in about five minutes. Well, because if we do, I mean, it might just kind of screw up what our plans are for the art walk part, so. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I guess it depends on how much.
Plans. What do you suggest?
Well, and maybe we table this and come back after the art walk and then approve the whole thing or something. I just, I want to, I want her to show her vision, I guess. I couldn't remember if we kept all those trees there.
Yeah, I thought we were going to take half of them out and just leave.
Yeah, the four or something.
Yeah, the four.
Okay. The, so, so these ones are meant to be evergreens in front here?
Yeah, keep those.
Okay. And then these are kind of deciduous mix there. I don't know the exact species off the top of my head with this map.
And they might be there, but I just, before we approve it, I just don't want to, I want her to show her.
Yeah.
Thing before we get too far.
So, yeah, I can certainly say, you guys can bring me back up if that's what you want to do.
We can do that.
What are we approving exactly?
Well, the rest of it.
Well, I, I have some questions and concerns about what happened in our meeting last night, because, I mean, last, two weeks ago. One is, I think we made decisions as a council that should have been in a working group and shouldn't have been part of a council decision, because people were making comments based on personal knowledge and not necessarily expertise. So like saying what kinds of trees. We should talk to an arborist around that, you know, as to what makes sense for trees to plant, environmental. We decided to not do as many native plants, and a comment was made, it's too much maintenance for Public Works. Public Works didn't say that. We said it on this staff. When I went to the League of Cities, I found out that Victoria and Delano do natural plantings and have no problems with it being extra the first two years. Yes, it is more work, but after that, you know. So there were things like that. The mention of doing anaer, I can't say it. Anyways, the chairs. Those chairs are not accessible, and I got a lengthy letter from someone with disabilities who said that they felt that we dishonored older people in this town and people with disabilities by identifying that kind of chair, which clearly is not accessible. And I did raise that at the meeting, and it was sort of pushed aside. It is not, you know, so as a council, we should be setting standards. We should say we want it to be universally accessible. We should talk about having environmentally appropriate plantings and things like that, instead of identifying and, and trying to design the plan. You know, that's why we had the consultants design it. We should be giving the overall vision and the guidelines for it. And also, something I just got exposed to, which I'd like for us to look at, would be the use of solar lighting in the park, which could potentially have significant cost reduction for us in operating that, that system and stuff. And plus, I've been back to that park three times this week. I'm, I do a one-mile walk every day, so I'm becoming known as the lady in the walker in town. But I think that there are things that we missed. There are some historic plaques in the park that were part of the road system. No one quite knows the history at our staff, and we're going to try and find out. But we, we need to be more mindful as a council what our role is, not as designers of the park, because I think that we've steered some things that may be inappropriate in making it the park that we want.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, to Sherri's point, that's one thing. I don't consider myself a subject matter expert on plantings, but however, I do consider myself a taxpayer, and I think we need to think long and hard before we spend money on something, I mean, I know darn good and well that those evergreens are not going to make it. It is way too windy over there. They're just not going to make it.
I guess I would defer to, I mean, to your point too. I mean, I, we picked, you know, where we want trees or we don't want trees, but we shouldn't be designing the park, and I mean, I would defer to the experts on that. I want there to be trees, but I don't want to pick what kind they are.
Right.
I don't know. You know? But I don't want to, I don't want to have no trees. Lot of sun.
How do you guys pick that, those evergreens? Are they going to last? I mean.
Yes, I mean, we have landscape architects, they're, they're not necessarily trained arborists, but they understand what, what grows well where. And then the ones that we pick based on what the aesthetics that we want for the site, and then specifically like the ones in the north, we want to make sure that those don't get too tall, but they're still evergreen, so they can be decorated for, for the winter. And go back, we, we actually, all of the flowering plants, I believe, almost all of them are still native plants, but they're ones that are not going to be spreading and succuring, and so they're not going to be over, they're not going to overload public or Public Works park staff on maintaining those types of things. We did clear all that up, so that everything, everything in there has kind, has been vetted between all the groups that are going to be taking care of it.
Are we still doing that concrete wall on the top there?
The.
On the very top, yeah.
Up here? Yeah, and that, and that one's kind of, just because, you know, we wanted to get this lower and flatter, that.
But you can sit there and it, and it's accessible, right?
Yeah.
That's kind of why we kept it.
Yeah, ideally, that one's going to be accessible. If we don't keep that in there, we're going to have to have a fairly steep piece of concrete to match into what's going on with the back of the, the Three Rivers Park sign stand there.
No, it's accessible as in you can sit on it, but there's no handles. It was just a piece of concrete, right?
It's just a piece of concrete, yep.
But we do call it accessible.
It's a correct height, maybe? Is that what you're?
Yeah, it's, it's going to vary, so it's going to be fairly short.
Seep height.
It's going to kind of be like kid's height on this side, and then adult's height on that side.
Oh, okay. It kind of.
Yeah, so that, that, this one, this one varies. This one down here in the performance area will be, I believe, 18 inches.
But would we have spaces where someone could bring a wheelchair in? Would there be open, like, areas where someone might say, I will, my wheelchair here, or a walker could go in and people sit on their walkers?
Well, that's the whole other part of.
Concrete, yeah, over here at the.
I mean, obviously, the, the a-chairs, I'll call them.
Yeah.
I can't say the word either. Adirondacks. Adirondack chairs. Yeah, they are tough. I mean, even I have a bad back, and some of you don't.
You can't get out of them.
Well, I can. I don't think we should be deciding. But I don't.
But, yeah.
But I don't, I don't, does it have to be perfect for everybody? I mean, I don't know.
I think you, you try to make it so successful.
But that's, but that's why we left the concrete wall in. Last time, I thought, because that had accessibility features. I, I think I even said, there's no way I'm going to sit on the concrete.
Yeah.
Whatever, but it, but it is accessible, I guess.
I don't think we should get into like the minutia of that, like, you know, we shouldn't be choosing the chairs and defer to the experts, like Councilmember Pugh said, but you can have both. I mean, if you go to the Commons in Excelsior or go to Izeta, they have like the chairs or like a table with four chairs that everyone can get in and out of, and then in a separate spot, maybe under a tree, you can have some adirondacks, whatever. You don't, and we can have multiple types of seating, but I would, I would leave that to someone else's expertise.
Right, so it'd be a combination. We'd have the eight chairs up around that what was going to be a fire pit.
Yeah.
And then we can discuss further what other types of seating we could use down there, but I think to Sherri's point, the area that's going to be used for presentations and stuff would be accessible to a wheelchair as well as a walker.
Yeah, it's going to be some, I mean, you're going to be able to wheel or walk. It'll be very, very accessible platform, but yeah, I mean, you're not going to sit on, you know, sit on the ground, the concrete, so you're not going to have a chair beyond the concrete wall that you could sit on, right? So, but I guess we could add other feature, I guess, accessible feature, or maybe they have those chairs that are easier to get out of. Maybe like a higher level chair.
It's just, it's just integrating. It's like, when you go into a movie theater now, usually when the level you come in, there's a row, and there'll be handicapped seats, and there'll be empty spaces in between, so that one or two wheelchairs could fit in. Or Orchestra Hall in Minneapolis, they have a row in which there's like a table, and there are fold, there are chairs that sit there, but then if people have walkers or wheelchairs, they just move the chairs out and they can roll right into it. So you can incorporate it. I'm just saying, you know, we want to make sure that there's access.
I mean, these chairs will be movable, so I mean, hypothetically, we could leave one open, and a wheelchair could come in there.
Yeah.
And that, I mean, would that be considered accessible? I don't know.
Yeah.
But let's say if you have a walker and you're coming, and you want to sit down, you ain't sitting in those, then you're going to go on the, on the wall.
Well, some people do sit in their walkers.
Yeah, the walkers.
No, I'm saying, well, yeah, I guess.
Mine has a seat in there.
Yours has one, yeah.
I feel like we're a ways off from having to make those kinds of decisions. We have a lot of.
Well, that, I think that that's why I'm just saying, we need to just leave that to the design team to make sure that those are incorporated, and that we shouldn't get into the specifics of the furnishings.
And pitch us their ideas. Wherever the designer, I don't know if that's you or.
No, I'm, I'm more of a roads and water main type of guy.
So Matt, I do have a couple of questions that came to thought when I was looking through this. We've had a lot of wiring stolen out of, you know, lighting poles and stuff in St. Paul and Minneapolis. Do we have anything that'll protect our copper wiring from being disturbed in that bid?
Copper wiring?
For being just, like, stolen after it's installed?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe.
Okay, I'm just asking, I want to make sure.
Yeah.
And then the outlets that we're installing, will they be locked or?
So we, that was one of the changes we made yesterday when we met.
Okay.
Most of them are going to be part of, like, the lighting poles or the bollards, and so they're going to have a.
Okay.
What we call a weatherproof cover on there, and then I believe we're going to have that controllable with a breaker if necessary.
Okay, good. All right. And then lights on the gazebo thing, I don't know what to call it.
We're not touching anything down there.
Okay, do those lights work or do we know? Do you know, Ryan? There's a little round portal-looking lights all around that. They do not. And then someone has strung some lights up and ran an extension cord down the back, and it's plugged into one of your outlets. They're just those green garden lights with the light bulbs?
Those from Christmas.
Those were from Christmas.
Were they there from Christmas?
They were still up when we did that walk.
No, they're just plain, yeah, they're white.
They've been from Christmas.
No, it must have gone back up, so they were down, they were down at some point, but.
They were there last week, so I don't know. But yeah, there's an extension cord. But anyway, just an FYI. And then we're replacing the wood on the flooring, but I went over there and I looked at like the column. This thing is deteriorating rapidly. In fact, one of these bases to these columns, you can literally pull wood out. So if we're going to fix the floor, I think we might want to take a look at repairing or conditioning the actual structure. I don't know what that's called. I'm assuming we're calling it a gazebo?
Well, since that's existing already, is that like kind of in our CIP?
I will add that two years ago, we did some rehab to it, and this is where we're at with it. We don't have the CIP to replace it because it was a part of where we want to go with this, and we haven't had that on the list yet.
It's pretty bad.
So now that it's part of the new park, or like we, you know, think it will be, should it be? Is that something that we should probably be added?
To go into design of what, what we want to see there.
Yeah.
Well, a quick fix. You guys could fix it. Yeah.
It's not a fix.
It's not fixable?
It's not a fixable.
It's in pretty, it's deteriorated.
We put a bit of money into it three years ago to get it to this point.
I'm just talking like way later, like you get it fixed, and then it's like, okay, well, in 10 years, what are we going to do? You know, like every, every piece of something in a park.
It's rotting.
It's 20, what was it, 2001? 24 years old?
Wait, it went to trail? Or did it go in with the canal?
This whole section's coming out.
I think it's 2001.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that included. It was just kind of a.
That's, you know, that's why I was bringing it up, because it's in, I don't know, go down and look at it, Ryan, but in my opinion, it's, I mean, literally, there's wood coming out, there's parts that have rotted away, there's, the column itself looks like it's still in decent condition, but what it's sitting on is rotting.
The foundation is a problem.
Yeah. And then if the lights don't work, I mean, I'd kind of like to get those lights working that are little porthole lights, they look very nautical. I didn't even notice they were there until I walked down there and really looked.
Were they the ones that are like three feet high?
Uh, they might be, but they're in the col, underneath, like the column comes down, and then there's a base, and they're in the base. You can see that.
See that?
I mean, I don't know if they're repairable. Probably not. Plus, they're probably not LED if they're 20 years old, correct?
No.
Right.
So anyway.
Do we want that added into our estimate? Well, if it has to be fixed, I mean, we don't want it falling apart with a brand-new $2 million park.
I mean, is it falling, like tomorrow going to fall apart?
I wouldn't say tomorrow, but it's, literally, there's pieces coming off of it, like I can look at.
We're definitely going to have to put it in the CIP.
So we can do the CIP for next year?
So we could save some money if we did something else at this point. So we could save some money if we did something else at this point. We could simplify it.
Is it cheaper to do it as part of this?
I wouldn't think it would be cheaper to do a part of this, would you?
No, it just, it's priming, yeah. The, kinda why we didn't touch too much of that space down there is because we didn't, you know, performance area improvements was kind of an open-ended item as far as what the, what the community would want down there, and so we just figured the decking would be a good, make sure that's good. Good and safe and it's an alternate so we can keep it or pull it at any point, or maybe that all just gets held off until phase, phase three.
I think the railings are fine, aren't they, Ryan? I, I didn't. So I don't think it's a safety issue.
Which one? Yeah, yeah, that was the problem. One of the railings rotted and we had to rebuild one and touch up as much as possible to hold it together for if we realistically put it in phase three and we did the decking at the same time, I think that will be the realistic end of life for it. You know, if it's, say, five years out.
I think that we could put that, you know, like you said, put it out into the future. The Humanities Council of Minnesota has these sort of cu- cultural heritage grants of a hundred and fifty thousand and more, and maybe we could look at going for a grant like that to, once determined how we're gonna use the deck to fund that kind of rehab.
Can you have that, does the floor have to go under that foundation?
I, yeah.
That, that's what I was.
Yes, that's the end of it.
So the floor would have to go in underneath that?
It's sitting on concrete though, but I don't. I don't know, Ryan, do you know? I know it's sitting on concrete and the boards. I don't think.
There's footings underneath that.
There'd have to be, it's in the water.
Okay, do we wanna, do we wanna pause and? Do you have any, did you bring anything?
I do, I did. If you'll indulge me for a moment.
Well, do we wanna pause on this? And then go to number.
So pause on the resolution on seventeen seventy?
Not that we're tabling it, just pausing it, and then we'll come back to it.
Okay, do you want me to sit down or stay up here?
Sit down, man.
Stand a little bit.
Why don't we do for, just for Robert's rule of order, why don't you just make a motion to move this up the agenda?
Okay.
The, the other item.
I make a motion to move number seven, which is receive final plans and order advertisement for BIS Lost Lake Commons Phase Two, move it from seven to eight, and move number eight, which is Lost Lake Commons Art Phase, uh, Phase Two and a Half to number seven. Uh, that's my motion. Can I give a second? Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, so now we're on number eight. Well, which is number seven then?
Yeah.
Lost Lake Commons Art Walk Phase Two and a Half.
Well, again, if you'll indulge me for a moment, I, um, I wanna leverage our history of Tonka Toys and I'm gonna pitch that we use that site of the park as the art walk to give a tribute to Tonka Toys, give Mound its some identity. And, and again, I'm not a, I'm not an artist. I'm just a conceptor, so I literally just put this down as a concept to see if, to see possibilities, and the possibilities are pretty endless. You know, if we would agree with this, you know, you'd work with the Historical Society and find an artist, what have you, but I just was having fun trying to put, put together some things that could give Mound a little bit more of a landmark feel. And I'm gonna hand these out. On the back is kind of my mock-up. And on the front, you're gonna have to get oriented a little bit, 'cause I flipped the map around. So like this is the way you've been used to looking at it? And then I flipped it so this way, 'cause I did the, this is the section I'm working on.
Okay, where the sculpture garden was gonna be.
Yes, so, just so you're oriented, when you flip it over, that's kind of what I was drawing out some. I mean, there's so many ideas, I, I can't stop myself, but I'm also not an artist, so. But, you know, if you read through this and all of the the amazing history that Tonka Toys brought to Mound, I, I think we could have a lot of fun working with an artist, um, to come up with some kind of cool landmark type things. And if you go to the back, this is so, you're at, you're at the street looking this way, okay? And, and this is where it turns off to the Andrews Trail. So as you're going down the street, it'd be fun, this is the Welcome to Mound Trucking Capital of the World sign that they put on every road from Spring Park into Mound during all of the seventies. And so I thought it'd be kinda cool to be able to give that some notice. Maybe, and again, I'm not an artist, but whoever knows who the artist is, something cool to catch your eye. And then, um, to, to, to enter, I'm calling it Tonka Lane for lack of a better term, but to enter into Tonka Lane, you know, maybe have kind of an entrance that's made out of a crane, 'cause that was our first toy off the market. Um, again, these are just ideas. I'm not, I'm not a park designer, but I'm just trying to throw some.
Can they get something?
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, you guys.
Someone come up?
Yeah, here, pass him out.
Now, maybe if there's more of an audience.
And I'm only bringing this up because, um, Jesse and I have been in touch with Tonka Toys to try to get our usage. I've requested using our logos between the years nineteen forty-six and nineteen eighty-three. So honestly, I don't think there should be any problem with it because they're not even registered anymore. But because we're a city, we kinda had to go through.
Did you see the letter I got from the Historical Society? I think I sent it to Jesse, didn't I?
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, I shared it with Scott. Because I, I think the issue was because it wasn't for us, it didn't.
Right, yeah. I mean, it was to give you a sense of, Historical Society tried to get some usage of Tonka Toys, and so it's a letter that they finally got from Hasbro on it.
Just recently?
Well, it, no, they got it, I don't know, when, probably five, ten years ago.
Oh, okay, well, it's in Hasbro's hands now.
Yeah.
What did it say back then?
Well, it, it basically limited and gave the Historical Society what's use of the name kind of, but it was for a very short geoc- calendar time. I mean, I, you know, I think that it's, it's important. I mean, I've raised this before too, that Tonka Toys people don't know the history of it, and it was a major employer. It made Mound a regional economic center.
Yeah.
So it's really key to the history.
I, I, but more so what I, 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 I would love to give Mound some historical identity, which we you know, yeah, we talk about the Indian mounds, but nobody knows what they are.
Well, I think you have to be sensitive about that.
Yeah.
About, you can't raise that issue because you don't want people going around trying to find the mounds and digging in them.
Right.
So.
But, um, again, I just think, I, it's just something to noodle around while we're working on this next phase because as we're waiting, I noticed right before I left, Jesse, that we got an email from Basic Fund saying they're still waiting from Hasbro, but I'm hoping that Hasbro goes, wow, that'd be cool, and maybe they have some fabrications already that we could use, or they'd wanna be part of a grand opening, you know, we're just waiting to hear, so. But I'm just throwing it by because it just, going through Mound, this has bothered me since I've lived here, that there is literally no acknowledgement of our, literally our leading employer for thirty-seven years. I mean, we lost three thousand employees when they left, and when I moved here in eighty-nine, we were still digging out of that, so there's a lot of Tonka Toy fanatics out there. I think even if we worked with, um, the Historical Society, if you recall that one employee, I can't remember his name.
He, he volunteers at the museum.
Yes, and he's, he worked there his entire career.
Well, he was one of the designers of the first park.
So, you know, I, I think they'd all have a lot of really great feedback, and I also, on the back of this, I ran out of time to put some quickly together, but, so I, I'm talking about this strip right here, and then, you know, 'cause that's where you walk in the Tonka Toy Lane, and then this strip right here, I think it would be cool to do kind of a water taxi history, because those are the two, really the two things that brought us all of our dollars that made Mound for the most part, so that might be kind of a cool thing to introduce the, um, history of the water taxi, which they, they brought you in there, they picked you up at the depot, which is now Minnesota Banks. Okay, that's where the depot was, and then they pick people up there off the train tracks, and then they take you out to your cabin or to your, usually it was cabins back then, but it really did have a, a huge economic.
There is a plaque for the trolley.
Well, that would be cool.
It's, um, on the, on the corner where the post office is. There's a little cutout, and there's a plaque there, and there's another plaque down farther for the, um, train. And then across the street, there's one for, um, and what was it?
Steamboat?
Steamboat, no, wait, well, there are three different ones, and, um, it's where the, the, I call them cutouts, they're little like viewing stages, um, on, two are on the north side of Lake Street, of the Lakeshore fifteen, and one's on the south side, and they have these built-in, very nicely done plaques, but we don't know who did them.
Oh, that'd be fun. Well, anyway, just, I don't wanna take up a lot of time, but I just, you know, like if you look at this, um, it'd be kinda cool when you walk into, I think, this is just my idea, 'cause I've read all these Tonka books, but start with the first years of Tonka Metal Craft, you know, and showcase their logo, talk about the founders and everything they did, um, maybe on the other side, we, there are four, four or five stages of the logo years that they used, and each one of those years, um, it was the seventies that they were the most profitable, moving into the early eighties. And then each of these, and then maybe, I just did this as like, you know how you go to every cool restaurant and there's an oversized adirondack? I thought it'd be cool to be made out of metal and then in the shape of a truck. And then, you know, the logo would be there and, you know, welcome to the hometown of Tonka Toys or what have you, and what got me started on this, when Jason asked if I would work on some, um, welcome to Mound signs for the trail, I'm like, oh my God, we don't have a tagline. So that's when I went, okay, it could be welcome to Mound, you know, hometown of Tonka Toys, birthplace of Tonka Toys, you know, whatever. And that's when I asked Jesse and Scott to reach out to, uh, Basic Fund. Jesse ended up reaching out, so I, I, again, another correlation between the two that would bring some nice, um, cohesiveness. And again, I don't wanna overdo this, 'cause nobody wants Tonka Toy fatigue, but a couple really cool pieces of art, you know, maybe in here, you could have some sand, you know, like the toys, we used to have those, uh, surf sides, you know, the diggers? All kids love those, and it could, could be cool to be replicated in the first, you know, the first two toys, which were the, um, steam shovel and the train, the first produced of the, I, I just think there's so much, um, that could be utilized here with artists and with the, what was his name over at the, Historical Society?
Oh, I, I can't remember his name.
Well, anyway, he, he was so fascinating when we went for the tour. And, you know, he's been there his whole life, so he might have a lot of, he might even know fabricators, you know, because there's so many people who are Tonka Toy fanatics out there. So this is a little bit rough, but I just wanted to try to show you, there are so many possibilities that could give us kind of, I guess, that attraction, destination attraction, and I, I think it would be a missed opportunity not to use for this portion of the park. And I would love to, as we're driving in, you know, just to see some cool something honoring Tonka Toys. Whoever does that, whoever crafts it, whoever fabricates it, I don't know, that's something we would have to talk about.
Didn't the sign coming into Mound used to say, home of the most trucks built or something?
That is the sign right there.
Is that what it said?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was, and it was two feet by three feet. Sherri, you probably remember those signs coming in. But they were huge and, um, they were there for all of the seventies, so anywhere you drove into Mound, there was a lot of pride. And I would love to honor those three gentlemen and all the employees. No, 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 but none of them are alive.
Okay.
But they, they still have family. You know, if you see anything on Facebook and historical anything and you put something in about Tonka Toys, everybody and his brother worked at Tonka Toys in Mound, and they all have great fond memories. They all have lifelong friendships from there, and that's when I say honor the family members.
I was just curious.
Yeah. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts, but I'd like to consider it.
Does anybody have any comments or thoughts?
I guess I have a few comments and thoughts, and it kinda goes back to what Councilmember Pugh said before about how we kinda got into a lot of the park at the previous meeting? Was that two meetings ago? The last meeting?
The park was last meeting.
Okay. Time flies. Or crawls, but, um, my mom worked there forever, a long time, so I mean, I, I'd like, I like the idea of it, and like you said, you don't wanna get Tonka Toy fatigue, and, you know, there's a way to, like, look at it and design it and do it right, and like relook at it and then look at it again, and just, but like the little the digger or like little toys, I mean, having Tonka Toy Lane, I think that's really cool. I like trying to explain myself to our friends on the Park Commission because of, we kind of picked apart some things at the last meeting, but my real main motivation was that, for that, was to, that so it can be really well thought out. You know, I don't have a problem with the art walk or the hamm- hammock grove in, in general. I was just thinking it's something that we can table. You know, we don't have to rush. It's not like we have to do this now or never. We can do, um.
Everything else.
The resolution was, you know, omitting, I think, the hammocks and, and the, um, the fire pit and the art walk and not saying, we don't wanna do this, we just, we don't have to decide right now.
For the, this part only.
Pay for it later, for this part only. So like for this, I think it's a great, or the, the Tonka Toy thing, I think it's a great idea.
It's just something to consider for budget, you know, going forward, and to find the right people to do the less is more and do it perfectly and pristinely.
Like, I don't really want less trees there than there are now, but I think like this fits right in it. I can see the trees are all still there.
I didn't get very specific.
Yeah, but I mean, it's just, you know, like I'm, I'm just saying, I think it's a really good idea. I like it, and I, I think it's just something like we can do. It's like we can finish phase two and we can decide what we want later. It's I think it's more feasible than trying to manage, um, like rotating art, and I don't know how we're gonna or if we need to, you know, keep up on that, and I just think it's something like I'm not, in the previous meeting, I wasn't saying I don't think we should do it. I think we should have, we should just kick it down the road a little bit. But I think it's, I think it looks good.
Being kicked down the road, my brain was working overtime, and I just thought.
Well, like this should be part of, part of it, you know, like I think it looks good.
Well, that's why we call it two and a half.
Yeah, that's Jason called it two and a half, Mayor Hope called it two and a half, but it, it just seems, I just don't wanna miss an opportunity to give put Mound on the map, and we were whirling out.
Well, it sounds like we'd have time and resources on our side, just based on our, of course, the location, Mound for Tonka Toys and the Historical Society to, you know, take the time to think of putting something together there. I guess also seeing if Hasbro and everyone is favorable of us using all of their logos and everything, but.
Well, they're, none of those logos are registered anymore. They don't even look like the Tonka logo, and, but the whole point of history is to introduce the logos that did make Mound Metal Craft and Tonka Toys.
You know, it does, the last thing I was thinking about, again, I, I just wanted to explain kinda more myself in the last meeting too, of saying, like, I don't think we should not do A, B, or C. I just think we should, you know, like tweak phase two and then like consider these for later, and I mean, the Tonka Toy thing would maybe lend to a lot of really fun annual events or something, you know, I don't know what, I don't collect them, but, you know, stuff like that, I mean, it's.
Oh, I see, like, like, like.
Land marker destination, but you know, you can kinda build a.
People bring their cars to.
Yeah, build a calendar. Build a calendar around, you know, you could, you could really build a calendar of events around, I guess, whatever would be in the art walk thing, but the Tonka Toy thing could be like an annual, you know?
Well, and also, I, I think there are so many people, new people who live in Mound, who have no idea that we are the birthplace of Tonka Toys, and just the historical interest alone, I think, would be really fascinating for people.
So I, I would say, we should say, let's, well, I'm not, I guess, you wanna talk first?
No, I, I agree. I mean, I like the idea. I think the concept is good. I've got a good friend that works for Mattel, and she was like, oh, that is the best idea ever. She goes, I can't believe Hasbro would turn you down. She said, um, it would almost be like a rebirth of these trucks because they're not super popular right now.
Well, they are going back to metal for their anniversary right now, but, you know, they've gone to plastic and.
Yeah.
I truly am hoping Hasbro will go, yeah, that'd be an awesome photo op for Hasbro, you know, and maybe they have some fabricated items already that they've used in toy shows and, you know, we'll see.
So I guess the question I would have would be for Matt, and I'm putting you on the spot. We were scheduled to put some sort of power over there. Will there be lighting poles over there already, and we would look like, if we were gonna do one big thing like this tower item, that would need power probably, 'cause we want that lit, but what else over here would need any kind of specialized lighting? You know, if we had a couple stations where they would play or sit in a chair.
Just gonna put conduit in there and we'll deal with it later?
Yeah, is that gonna take care of them?
That's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, in case there was other art there.
Yeah, we're running power to all the lights. There's gonna be outlets there, and then if we need to, to break a circuit. And then if we need to break a circuit in that handhold, we can hook some up right there.
Okay.
So, so my suggestion would be, we take basically all those bushes out or the trees, right? Or whatever, whatever you guys want to do. Take some of that out for phase two.
I think it would leave, if we ended up, whatever route we go.
Yeah.
Whoever's going to be concepting that area shouldn't, shouldn't be, shouldn't be having to work around bushes that we just put in for the sake of putting bushes in. Or trees, for that matter.
Those are all trees.
And there's two and a half, I mean, we're not, we're not pushing this out ten years. I mean, you know, we're.
No, but I think it would give us time to really find the right people to be involved to give us great feedback and.
So I would suggest getting rid of those trees, basically.
You mean this year?
They're expensive.
When we go back to our phase two conversation, I'd say, let's scrap that whole right side.
For now.
So they have a blank slate.
I think so.
Yeah. Approve the rest of it if we want to approve it.
Yep.
And then, behind the scenes, you guys in parks and Jesse or whatever can work on, what does that look like? And this will be like a next year thing, a spring or something next year.
And I think the first thing would be to meet with the Historical Society and, and Hasbro. They might say, we have the coolest stuff. Here, take it all.
Yeah. So I have a question. If I'm understanding this right, I, I kind of like the resolution on, you know, like on seventeen seventy-one, like approving phase two as it is, like this.
Oh.
Like with the tree, with everything that's there, and then we just deal with.
If I'm reading this right, though, these evergreens are between five hundred and six hundred bucks a piece. So I don't know that we want to agree to spend that money.
But the trees, like I don't want to have zero.
The trees aren't.
You know what? They're going to be tiny. It's, nothing's going to be different than little two-inch trees.
So nothing, I'm trying to visualize it right now. I mean, right now, there's nothing there.
Would it be just grass? I mean, the grass looks pretty rough.
Am I on the wrong side of the side of the lane there? Is it, right now, there's nothing there?
There's nothing. It's just open grass.
Okay, all right.
There's, where are those, the, the trees in the middle? There's some trees kind of right, right in that area. There's three trees. It's not as big of a space there now. And the rest of it's just open. I think there's a few scattered trees.
I might even consider getting rid of all those trees except for the main tree that's there. If you remember from all the surf site stuff, people didn't want trees in the middle of their paths. You know that middle tree, the little mini, the middle tree? That's the existing tree right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
And then get rid of the other two, too. I'm just throwing it out there.
There are two with it.
I guess now that I know that there aren't, I, I guess in my head, I mean, I walk there all the time. It's just like when you put yourself there, I didn't realize that there was nothing there right now. So I guess I can be fine with that. But I'd like to leave the rest of the trees, but.
There's a piece of art in there.
Just a couple on the existence.
Yeah, yeah. And then like, you know, approving this or authorizing bid for phase two as it's laid out. And then, you know, taking the time to look into everything else.
And you know, it could always have a cute sign that says, coming soon.
Yeah.
You know?
Under construction.
Under construction with a crane holding it.
That's funny, yeah.
All right. So are we good with?
We're good.
Yeah, it's a cool idea.
All right. So let's, so now we're done with two and a half. Let's go back to numbers seven.
Which is now item eight.
Huh?
Which is now item eight.
Which is now number eight, sorry. Okay. So now, you can come back up.
Yeah.
And so basically, what we're talking about is, we want to ma, basically make a motion to approve everything sans that area. Yes, no, no trees on this south.
Right.
South, you said. Okay.
Yep. Okay.
Any changes with the decking or anything like that, or?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna have to add that to the CIP link for next year.
Okay.
So because, I mean, this could go any way. Like if we don't do, if we decide to do this or different art or put the trees back, I mean, that can all be.
It all can be, we can accept it.
Yeah, it's not now or never.
We can work on it over the winter and do it in spring.
Yeah.
That's why we call it two and a half, because the three might be a while.
Two point six and two point seven.
Well, and I, and I also think too that.
Just joking.
You know, I'm being cautiously optimistic here, but I am really hoping that Hasbro has an interest and really does, you know, all the toy shows in New York. I mean, they've got to have in their warehouse so much cool stuff.
Being able to build events around it is kind of exciting, you know?
It's, it would be so, you know, you could have your class reunions there. I mean, you could do so many things.
And on the devil's advocate too, let's just say, someone's watching this and they're like, that's stupid, why would you do that? It's not going to be the whole park. It's just, it's one little Art Walk. It's where our Art Walk was.
And it's one little walk to give a huge tribute to a huge part of our economy.
Our history.
And history.
Okay. So let's, someone make a motion for this.
I have one more question.
Okay.
Sorry. This is hydraulic mulch with seed mixture residential turf. I think, is that just touching up?
That's touching up, but we need to disturb to do the other work.
Okay. So back to the current turf. I wasn't here. Did we approve?
We haven't paid for that yet.
Yeah, and that is really bad.
So that, that's part of the process of the seed though, is they got to get the seed growing through. And then once it, once it's big enough and strong enough, then they can spray the weeds and then cut the weeds. And then it is generally takes better and is much cheaper than putting in sod.
Did they reseed it again?
That's not.
They did reseed it again, I remember, because I asked you about it earlier.
Yeah, they.
And you were like, yeah, they reseeded. Haven't been paid.
Yeah, they did it last fall. It, it didn't take very well. They did it again this spring. So that's kind of why it looks the way it does, but it, it should look pretty nice.
By when?
What did they spray, what did they spray these weeds with to kill?
Uh, I can't tell you for sure. I don't, I don't know. I don't think they've done it yet.
I think we need to make sure it's.
Yeah, it's, it's not nice soft green grass. There's no.
I mean, usually what they do is they do total kill. Let it sit for X amount of months and months, and then they seed. Because I have, kids have all, have all been in landscaping and I own a company that sells all that kind of stuff. So it, it seems like it was done backwards. Usually you kill all the weeds before you put grass seed down.
It was all dirt.
Yeah, there was nothing growing before they put the seed down.
The dirt's saying, it's not even good dirt.
Yeah. And it just was kind of a tough winter for getting that stuff to take, so.
Well, we'll keep our fingers crossed and hope it looks pretty.
Well, the sprinklers were on the other day.
They're running twice a day right now to make sure.
Are they?
Yep. Seed to come up and be established enough that you can take care of the weeds. So this is just a hard time. It looks terrible. But when it comes in established enough, then we can actually treat it and then get the weeds down there. And I've talked to Dustin about it multiple times. And he thinks it's going to look outstanding. It's just a matter of time. And this is what you get if you don't put sod down. But in the long run, not having to deal with the sod and the kill off of the sod and how much more watering we'd have to do, we think this will turn out fine. It's just getting into that point and having to deal with it until, how it looks until we get there.
Well, the weeds don't look bad. They were cut the other day.
And that's why we're watering twice a day now to try to keep it maintained.
So when should it look presentable? Do we have an ETA on that?
Fall.
Or next spring?
Probably at least one month out, man.
Yeah, I haven't stopped there and looked in a couple of weeks, so I can't say for sure. But soon they should be able to mow and then.
They did cut it sometime in the couple of weeks.
Did they cut it, yeah?
Okay.
Just recently.
Yeah, I think before the fourth, because they were doing, the crew was out there. They were doing a lot of great work around the streets, cleaning up the beds and mowing lawns and stuff.
We haven't taken ownership of that grass yet, though.
Well, someone cut it.
Well, someone cut it.
Yeah, the contractor.
That was.
Okay. Okay. Well, we got our resolution. Can someone make a motion?
I can do that.
Okay.
I would like to make a mo, a motion approving a resolution receiving plans and specifications, ordering advertisement for bids for loss slate common improvements, project phase two, resolution twenty-five dash six-two.
All right, got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
And that, do you have to indicate that we're not doing anything on that side of the?
I, I've got it in the notes. We'll make sure it happens.
Okay.
Okay. No other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that, that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now number nine, we're going to go into a closed session. Go ahead.
Okay. Mayor and members of the council, regarding agenda item nine, the city council will be moving to a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute, section thirteen D.05, subdivision three, under the attorney-client privilege. The property that is at, that is part of this closed session is located at seventeen thirty-seven Wildhurst and is currently subject to city code enforcement for noncompliance with the building code. The city council requires the item to be closed for more than routine legal advice to allow for a candid and open discussion about the decision to move forward with litigation and the related issues, including claims, counterclaims, and possible areas of reconciliation. Nothing is presently pending before the city council regarding the decision. And discussing the matter in open session would be detrimental because it would take place in front of potential litigants. And a closed session would benefit the public because any financial liability for this matter would be taxpayer funded. And with that, staff is looking for a motion to adjourn to the closed session.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn for closed session?
Motion to adjourn to the closed session.
All right, you got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, we're adjourned for the closed session. We'll be back. Back from our closed session. Now we got number ten. We got council reports. Councilmember Pugh, do you have anything?
Well, I went to the Leagues City's State Conference the last week in June, learned a lot of exciting things, one of which is that one of the laws passed will allow us to do video conferencing for board meetings. So in the future, that may be an option for us. There, there are some stipulations as to how you do it, but, but it now is something that, that can be done, which, you know, during COVID.
Like for commissions?
Yeah, for, well, for, for board, for.
For council, like say you're in vacation in Florida, you have to be in a public meeting, public spot, and you got to know, people got to know where you're at. But you could be via a Zoom or Teams.
So that's changed. There were a lot of good workshops and got to talk with a lot of vendors. Talked to a vendor who does splash parks and talked to one who did solar lighting and saw our consultants that we use. They were all there too. And got to talk with a lot of city council people and, and staff. Matter of fact, what is it? I'm trying to think. It's just north of Duluth.
Two Harleys?
No, it begins with an H.
Huntington?
Huntington. They, they, I was talking with them and they use their website and Facebook as a way of collecting input. They have a system in which they get a lot of chatter and feedback from residents in their neighborhood. And I got to meet one of the new Orno council people. And tomorrow, we're going to go and look at our water, our, what do you call it? Our gardens.
Rain guards.
Yeah, rain gardens together. So it was really a good conference. I'd encourage others to think about going to it next year. A lot of good information and sharing that you can get out of it. And I think that was it.
Okay. Councilmember McAnany?
I just really think all the flags lighting the street look great. Thank you for getting that. And I wanted to say thank you to Ryan and the guys, Jesse, for getting them all up. They look just great.
You can just thank me.
Yeah, thank you, Jesse. You hung them beautifully. They look just awesome.
Yeah, he's been, he's been on that one big time.
Really looks nice. And that's all I've got.
We found some funding too, I think, Noah.
All right, Councilmember Casalano?
I don't have anything this time.
All right. Councilmember Harris?
Um, I went around and visited a lot of the parks in my spare time. I appreciate Jesse's patience. I've been sending emails right and left. Other than that, not much.
All right. I just have two things.
We have the Orno Police Department meeting on the sixteenth or eighteenth.
Next week?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, two things. Spirit of Lakes is coming up before our next, our next meeting. So we'll see you all there. And then our water meeting is going to be on the twenty-second at six o'clock. So if anybody wants to come out for that, we're going to give an update on the water, our funding and what our next steps are. So any other discussion?
Do you want to use the boards that we used two years ago?
Yes.
Because I have a fresh set.
Yep.
And then do you want to have a couple of the stands? I can bring them over to your house.
Uh, or just give them to Jesse.
Okay.
Because they brought them.
I can bring them to City Hall then.
Perfect. Yeah, Public Works.
Yeah, they've set it up.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, we had the, we had a park one too. I don't know if you have a phase, if you could blow that up, what we're doing, phase two of the park?
Sure.
Well, hypothetically, we haven't approved it yet. Anyway, I mean, park, water, you know?
Do we need any updates to the park, or the water one, sorry?
The what?
Any updates to the water?
Well, that's what we're.
The water boards.
I was going to say water board.
We're going to do the QR code. So I think honestly, I know how long those things take to put together with good information. I don't think there's time to get something beautifully done. But I do think, you know, you and Maggie and Jesse, or Jay, Mayor, I know you're really busy doing all the water stuff, but I think it'll be better if you can get that updated on the website. So at least they can go there and really have an understanding and feel informed after they read it.
Who's going to do the handout? Are you going to do that for them or do they need to?
We'll get it.
That'll have the QR tag on it?
Maggie's going to get me a QR. I know, design something.
All right.
On the water tab too, FYI, can you do a link to all the water meetings we've done? Like, I think usually it's March, but I don't know if there's an easy way to find all of them. But I know March for the last, since I've been mayor, but.
Yeah. We, do we have the access to those old videos? You know, when we, when, not when we moved.
From Elm C D, Elm C?
Yeah.
Well, someone's got to have them somewhere. I don't know.
They should.
If nothing else, at least we need, we need to put the ones, you know, the la, last one, this, because I, I don't see it on there.
You know, maybe that's something that when we have the meeting, we need to reinforce that we've been at this for six years.
Right. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to shut up in two seconds. I pulled together all the newsletters that, since I've been mayor anyway, the last two years. And eight out of ten, we say something about the water and more or less in depth about it too. So, you know, we're, it's out there.
Come see us on the twenty-second.
Come see us on the twenty-second. Okay. Uh, do you guys have anything? Number eleven?
I'll just mention the, the library is now moved to the city hall lobby area. It's, it's a pretty cool setup. People have been, it filled up with books like instantly. So people definitely are using it. It's pretty slick, so.
Do they have someone who's in the lobby or?
Somebody comes by, there's, should be daily because they'll stock and stuff. But no, it's got a little kiosk so you can walk in, you can check out a book, or you can return a book. It's basically just like what they had there, only here.
Need.